Well, Randy, do you hear me?
Yes, I do. I got a short turnaround here. I've got twenty people to go in here, so.
Thank you. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
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 Yeah, the municipal just ended, so it's gonna be a quick minute here from you to get this going here.
Hi, this is Alderman Hill. Can you guys hear me?
Got you.
Thank you.
Dex. Who do we have from Woodson? Does Carrie?
Hey, Randy, it's Carrie.
Okay, thank you. And then Bill Farinwell. Candace. Last but not least, Candace. Just talk to you a minute. Okay, everyone's named. No, that's good. Whenever you are ready, Domeno.
All right, ready to go?
I've logged in your name, so we're ready.
Hi, Randy. Hi, this is Alderman Hill. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we got you, Johnny.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we go. On June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, the governor of Illinois issued a statewide disaster declaration related to public health concerns. As head of this body, I have determined that an in-person meeting or a meeting otherwise conducted, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, is neither practical nor prudent because of the disaster. This meeting will be conducted by internet teleconference without the physical presence of a quorum. Prior to the commencement of this meeting, all members of these bodies were verified and can see and hear each other. I further find that the physical presence of members of the public is not feasible at this meeting due to the disaster, and more specifically, the practical difficulties associated with accommodating the public in an accessible, hygienic location that allows for appropriate social distancing. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contemporaneously hear all discussion in roll calls, votes live on the city's official website, on Facebook, via telezoom conference. Notice of these arrangements have been given in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The public may address this body consistent with the rules previously adopted and recorded and as adopted by the mayor or order. All votes shall be conducted by roll call, and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Can you read the title, city clerk?
Er, so this is the regular meeting of the city council of City of Blue Island, held remotely on Tuesday, August eleventh, twenty-twenty, at seven P. M. To participate remotely, download the Zoom app or call three one two six two six six seven nine nine. City council meeting is webinar ID eight four nine one six eight zero seven four four three with a password of one two four one four four.
I'll need a call this meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is safe. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll need a roll call, Mr. City Clerk.
Er, Alexander.
Here.
Alexander, here. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato, here. Casadus.
Here.
Casadus, here. Rita. Rita, absent. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Holly. Oh, hang on a second. He's, he's here. He just got in. Hi, Holly, here. Um, Farinwell. You're muted, Bill. I see him. Bill's here.
Randy, Nancy just said that she's trying to get in, or she's on the online.
Is this, is this Nancy? Okay, I'll continue with the roll. Hill.
Here.
Hill, here. Mac.
He was here. He's unmuted.
Carr. Carr. She was here. I'll come back to her. Zelman.
Here.
Zelman, here. Clinker.
Here.
Clinker, here. Stevo.
Here.
Stevo, here. Johnson. I see him here. Dexter.
I love you too.
Is that Nancy, Rita?
Hi, I'm sorry.
Nancy, okay, Nancy's here. Dex, I see you following. You're muted. He's here. Carr. She was here. Well, I see, I see Dexter and I see, and Candace was here, so as of right this minute, twelve, with one, uh, one trying to get in, two trying to get in. I see Johnson here, thirteen, with one trying to get back in.
All right, thank you. Uh, should we move on to number four? Presentation of general proceedings. I'll need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty. I need a motion and a second.
Lot of motions.
A second. Zelman.
All right, if there's no questions, I need a roll call.
Any question?
Go ahead.
Yes, for the interfund transfer from unrestricted and restricted accounts, uh, the amount was given, but it doesn't appear on the, on the minutes, and that should be, uh, inputted as well.
All right, so noted.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I abstain.
Rita abstain. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwell. You're muted, Bill. Farinwell. I'll come back. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Mac, it's you.
Muted.
Mac.
I see, I see him saying aye, though, like.
Yeah, he's muted.
Okay, Carr. Carr, how do you vote on the minutes? We're having Candace. Candace. All right, we'll come back to her. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson. Dexter. Minutes. He's muted. Okay, let's go back to Farinwell. Farinwell, Carr, and Johnson. There we go.
Yeah, this is Dex.
Dex.
All right, we hear you now.
Dexter, on a minute.
Yeah, I said, yeah. I don't know what's going on, because.
So, and I still have Farinwell and Carr muted, but what would you like to do, Domeno? You want to leave it at twelve?
Hey, you got to tell them, Randy, I'm sorry about disturbing you. Uh, star six to unmute, because you can mute it from your phone, but for whatever reason, the system has it, you got to put in star six to unmute.
Okay, Bill, Farinwell.
Okay, got it. This is Bill. Aye. Okay, now we got it. Good, good.
Farinwell, aye. Carr.
Aye.
On the minutes, okay.
All right, we're good. Thank you.
Thirteen ayes and one abstention.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Clerk, could you read number five, please?
Sure. Public comment shall be by email only. Persons interested in making a public comment must email their public comment to arhoiser@cityofblueisland.org by August eleventh, twenty-twenty, at six P. M. Email public comments received will be read during the public comment portion of the, of the meeting by city clerk Randy Hoiser. I've received three. First one is from Marcia Lee. I am so bothered by loud music from twenty-two fifty-eight hundred and twentieth place. At the last city council meeting on seven twenty-eight twenty, I brought this to your attention, and my question was not answered. I asked for the ordinance to be explained, and it was not. I want to know what is in the ordinance about everyday loud music in a residential district. Specifically, I want to know how many decibels are allowed, what hours are loud music allowed, what is the protocol for stopping the behavior? Are DJs allowed to practice their craft at their homes and disturb neighbors? I have called the police several days and multiple times on some days because the music is louder after the police leave. My punishment, quote unquote, for complaining. Not only has DJ Christian Oliva declared war, he actually opens the door and stands outside, which is beneath my bedroom window, and taunts me. His dad, who, Jesus Oliva, is a homeowner of twenty-two fifty-eight hundred and twenty. Please see attachments, Marcia Lee, and the attachments are Facebook posts that I'm, I forwarded to the police department, to the police chief for, for the review.
Okay, thank you.
This is Dave Helsley. My family came to this country in seventeen fifty-seven from Norway. They fought in the American Revolution. They fought and died in the Civil War with the Commonwealth Kentucky for the Union. I came from the backwoods of Elmhurst, and I am still an American fighting man. I am also a concerned citizen. Concern number one, why would the finance committee cancel a meeting when there is a large amount of money on the table from the hospital? No discussion, no meeting, and the people will never know why, what we had, what we could have had. Here is why it was canceled, because it is politics before the people, and somebody told them to cancel it. That is why. The problem we have here is young, white, arrogant men sitting in the wrong chair. I would rather a man, and I'd rather be a man than be beaten, than to be elected and be a little lapdog. I don't want any yes men. Concern number two, people need answers about the Chevy Tahos. An honorable mayor gave us his word that he would confess his actions. Mayor, you are considered to be honorable by the act of the people. You know, people prove their character by what they do when nobody's watching. If you answer, then, if you answer, then it will be over. If you don't answer, then we will know. A man is only as good as his word. You need to do what is right tonight. How do you know what is the right thing to do? My philosophy is that all of the options you have available to do, and the one would be most, the one wouldn't most not like to do, but that's probably the right thing to do. Concern number three, back on November twelfth of last year, the city council meeting, there was quite a debate about the rules, because some of the aldermen were wishing they could get answers about the Chevy Tahoe silliness. One side is trying to block the other from hiring a private investigator, while the other side argues to spend fourteen K of taxpayer money because they are wishing for answers. They were bickering about the rules with Kerry Horvath and making ludicrous motions to silence the city attorney, who was telling them they weren't following the rules. This is after they gave their word they would follow the rules to a T. Is your motivation for the investigation selfish ambition, or is it just more of a grudge? They are wishing for answers. They do not know what is right. All they discovered from the fourteen thousand dollar wish is that there was a state investigation going on, and don't interfere. We already know nobody is answering questions. I sure do wish I had my fourteen Gs back. Randy is the only person involved in this who did the, what was right. He is just a humble old clerk. Or is that one? This is what I have to say in a group of aldermen who are still wishing for answers. Try this, wish for answers on one hand, and then pick up a, pick up dog poop on the Blue Island Parkway with the other hand, and see which hand fills up faster. These, right here, are the only rules that matter. Rule number thirteen, hold to your word. Rule number fourteen, do what is right. Blue Island is a city that has all nations of people living here. That's the way it was meant to be. Some people need to be reminded. Nobody here is any better, any better than anybody else. You treat me right, I'll treat you right. That's the way it's supposed to be. We all walk around under the sun, we all bleed red. Alderman Stevo is the alderman. Only alderman, I have seen picking up other people's trash on the Blue Island Parkway. Alderman Stevo, hear this. Be sure your feet are in the right place, and then stand firm. Abe Lincoln. I will see you on the Blue Island Parkway with a poo bag in my hand. One from. The city council public comment. The pandemic and COVID nineteen are not going away, therefore, we continue to urge everyone to wear a mask to keep themselves, their family, members, and others healthy. Please come, if you need a face mask, gloves, sanitizer, or food. We're only here to help everyone, and we encourage universal mask, universal wearing of face mask. To everyone who has donated items for Blue Islands, Blue Islanders, and the public, we thank you. Together, hashtag Blue Island Strong will distribute face masks, gloves, hand sanitizer and food Saturday, August fifteenth, from ten thirty to twelve thirty, while supplies last. Location, Isner High School, enter one hundred and twenty-seven hundred Sacramento. Donors only, enter and perform arts, west parking lot. No questions asked, no contact, drive-through. If you'd like to, like your name included on the donor list, please notify me no later than eight twelve, twelve noon via email, phone call, or text. And then I got one comment from, uh, from, um, Ray Thomas from Ravens. Ray would like to meet with the mayor and/or municipal services to discuss resident-only parking on or about his building, so that the people that come to the business district do not park in the residential area. And, uh, and he would like to talk with the mayor and municipal services about that. And that's all.
Okay, all right, that's it. All right. Uh, we'll move on to number six, report of city officials. Uh, number one, uh, the appointment or request appointment of Jeanette Hoyt to the Civil Service Commission. Her term would expire twenty twenty-one. I would need a motion and a second.
I make a motion that affect, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second, Farinwell.
Thank you very much. Any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwell.
Aye.
Farinwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac. You're muted, Mike.
Star six. I told, I texted, I told him that.
Mac. Looks like he's frozen. I'll come back. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Fourteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Now, we move on to number two. I'll need a motion to approve a request from the K-9s for veterans to solicit funds on Saturday, August fifteenth, and Sunday, August sixteenth. And these proceeds are providing service dogs for veterans suffering, suffering from PTSD with the recognition that they cannot be, like, on one hundred and twenty-seventh, on the major thoroughways, on the main intersection. So I need a motion and a second.
Great. Rita, I make a motion.
Thank you very much.
Zelman, second.
Thank you. If, if no questions, I'll need a roll call, please.
I got a question, Mayor. I got a question. A question. This is Johnson. Where are they soliciting at?
Go ahead.
Where are they soliciting at?
Well, they should be, uh, from, I think, like, the major stores in front, probably by the Dollar Tree, sidewalk, uh, post office, and then probably, like, Vermont and Western on the sidewalk.
Okay. I didn't know if they could have made a, you know, a, uh, presentation that, uh, to, um, Blue Island Strong, because they'll be there Saturday with the food giveaway.
Right, okay.
That's all.
All right, thank you very much. So I need a roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwell.
Aye.
Farinwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Fourteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Move on to mayor's announcements. I want to thank personally, on behalf of all of us, Public Works, their employees, their workers. Since last night, they've been working tirelessly, uh, trying to clear, at least clear a path, so that vehicular traffic can go through our streets. It's gonna probably take a week to clean all that debris. And as you're aware of, uh, ComEd was notified from our office. We've been in contact with their team since early this morning. We gave them listings of, uh, I personally went around the city last night as to where trees or lines were down. So, we've done our best to request from all of you and from other city employees, if they saw any downed lines, to notify us, and we have that list, and we forward that, uh, all day today to ComEd, so they're aware of that, and we have what's called ticket numbers regarding that. I personally want to thank, uh, Airline Towing. Uh, this afternoon, we received a call from, um, um, the senior home on Ashland and, and Broadway, uh, the senior suites over there by Face Point. They were in dire need of a generator to, I guess, to current, everything up there. Uh, JR from, uh, Airline Towing was able to get us and get them a flatbed with a generator on there. The bottom line is, they didn't need it, but it was there available for them, and we want to thank him personally for that outreach and generosity. Um, next, I want to thank again the staff for being on top of all of this. Uh, prior to this storm last night was, again, the social unrest, and I want to, uh, Com Blue Islanders, both our police department, fire department, and everybody involved, the staff was monitoring the situation early that morning from Chicago. We're still monitoring the situation. We know there's something going on as we speak uh, in, in the Englewood area, so we're keeping, monitoring that, and we're, any intelligence will be forwarding, or any information you get, let us know, but we're monitoring anything that happens around us in the other suburbs, as well as in the city of Chicago. Um, regarding the advisory board, I personally sent out, uh, made phone calls to several individuals to belong to this board. Uh, I'm awaiting their acceptance. They were told me by the end of this week, they would give me the yes or no. If, if, if no, then I would seek out, uh, other people. There's possibly five total, and they're come from various, uh, ways of life here in Blue Island. So, regarding the advisory board, I'm just waiting for them to get back to me, hopefully before Friday, so we can get that up and going. Last week, uh, with, along with Mark Miller and my staff, uh, we paid a visit to one hundred and nineteenth Street and Vincent. There's a poss, there are approximately ten, uh, different companies who were observing in the location, and possibly will put a bid for the demolition and remediation of that area. So that's good news. Uh, we did send out another, uh, letter to MWRD regarding the, um, rain gardens by Longwood. While we were awaiting that, uh, I want to thank personally Julie Slom, Maria Almasan, James Amato, Alderman Stevo, myself. We did, uh, this past weekend, a little cleanup by the rain gardens and Longwood. Uh, I personally want to thank, uh, Public Health and Safety, specifically Alderman Dexter Johnson, Alderman Stevo, for pushing for the ALS, uh, support initiative, and, uh, hopefully, it's for the betterment of services provided to all our citizens here in Blue Island. As you know, Governor Prisker, uh, just a few days ago, uh, put down new CDC, or let's put new guidelines regarding restaurants and bars. Number one, one, uh, education. Second would be a written warning, uh, and then voluntary compliance, and then if they don't, then, uh, both police, as, as well as building inspectors, health inspectors, could then, uh, issue quote, tickets would then lead to what's called a class A misdemeanor in fines from seventy-five dollars to two thousand five hundred dollars. And we've prepared that, and we're going forward with that to all businesses in Blue Island. Um, we already talked about the social unrest. Uh, regarding the gardens, uh, in the Beverly Review, the August fifth, twenty twenty edition, there, it mentioned some volunteers who've been known as the gardening, gardening angels, and they're the ones who maintain the train stations on the Rock Island Line. So if you're ever taking the Rock Island, you see all those gardens by those train stations. They've been doing it for over twenty-five years, and these volunteers meet every Tuesday from April through October at nine A. M. That's just for your own information. Um, that's all I think I have. And the census, again, uh, the census volunteers will probably be coming out very shortly. Please, 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 uh, stress to your community, to your constituents, the importance of participating in that census twenty twenty. Uh, I sent out a message, uh, in English, and we'll do it in Spanish, uh, as well as my monthly message to the citizens re, and hopefully, everything will work out, and we get that message out for the benefit of all of us. Um, that's all I have on that, and we move on to city clerk, do we have any business? Mr. Clerk, do we have any business?
No business.
Any bits?
No bits.
Uh, city treasurer, I guess we have a copy of the monthly treasurer's report. I guess I'll need a motion for that, or no?
Yes.
I'll need a motion in a second, please?
Donahue moves to approve.
All right, do we have a second? Thank you very much. If no questions, I need a roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwell.
Aye.
Farinwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Star six, Candace.
Carr, on the treasurer's report.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Uh, no.
Johnson, no. Thirteen ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Now, we move on to number two of the city treasurer's approval interfund transfers from unrestricted and restricted of accounts. I need a motion and a second.
On a question.
Donahue moves to approve.
All right, do we have a second?
Second and Bellato.
All right, any questions? If not, roll call, please.
I have a question. Can we please have the amount that was transferred?
Uh, Alderman Stevo, the amount was one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I'll need a motion second. We need a roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Maybe, yeah.
Aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwell.
Aye.
Farinwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr. Candace.
Aye.
Candace, aye. Uh, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
No.
Stevo, no. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Twelve ayes and two noes, Your Honor.
All right, then we move on to number three, cash collection receipts report, and then no treasurer's announcement. Uh, city attorney?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Committee reports, committee, development committee?
Next meeting is tomorrow at seven P. M., and the next council meeting, I'll have two more minutes. I can't access the Sadee. I can't access the CD now to pull it up right now.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, finance committee?
Thank you, uh, your honor. I, uh, I lost power and still haven't got it back, so I will have my minutes from last week's meeting and yesterday's meeting at our city council meeting in two weeks. I do have some business, so, uh, in front of us, first, I have a motion to approve payroll for July the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, in the amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and eleven cents.
So you'll make the motion? Do we need a second, please?
Bellato, second.
Rita, second.
All right, thank you. If no questions, roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Cazidis.
Aye.
Cazidis, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwell.
Aye.
Fernwell, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Thirteen ayes and one no, your honor.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, uh, I'd like to make a motion of approval of the accounts payable for August the twelfth, two thousand twenty, in the, uh, amount of six hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and seven cents.
You got a motion? We have a second?
Bellato, seconds.
Thank you. If no questions, roll call, please.
Fernwell, the question?
All right, go ahead.
I got a couple of questions. Uh, first, uh, on page one of the, um, check proof, uh, there's an amount for Ackerman, ninety-seven bucks, and, um, I'm not gonna quibble over ninety-seven dollars, but I did listen to finance committee last month and heard the report that, uh, Mr. Acosta delivered, and it was, uh, not surprisingly and unfortunately, exactly what I expected, which was just a regurgitation of everything we already know, with the possible exception that he confirmed once again that there is, is, an inviga- an investigation undergoing by the state's attorney's office, uh, making all of this completely unnecessary. And I went back to the, um, minutes of the meeting of, uh, January twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, where we approved, well, the city council, I should say, approved the investigation. I voted against it. And, uh, I asked that any proposal for an investigation be more carefully considered so that money would not be wasted, because we would be starting, quote, "An investigation that would perhaps do nothing more than tell us essentially what we already know." I said, "I am skeptical after looking at all the documents in the package that we were given, that we are going to learn a lot from this investigation." I also said, "I don't like the idea that it comes up tonight, because there may be other options and better options for the city. We should explore them." So, uh, a year and a half ago, I said this was unnecessary. Tonight, I will say it again, and as proven by the presentation by, by Mr. Acosta, uh, and I think this has been a complete waste of money, um, and I regret that I won't have to vote for it, because we have authorized them to do the investigation, but I hope that it will be terminated post haste. Uh, second item on there is, um, on page, uh, thirteen, uh, there's the, uh, series of invoices from Montana and Welch, uh, which I will just note, I, we have all been given the detail, um, although it has not been included in this document, although the detail from Olderson and Stirk is included, so I'm not sure why. Don't, that detail isn't there for public record information, but I mean, in any event, the Alderman had provided with the detail. And, um, you know, in going through it, I will just say that, again, I, you know, looking, I could, I'm not gonna waste our time with all the points. So I, I, I yellow highlighted, you know, probably, shoot, about fifteen things in here that are very confusing to me about why do we have these folks doing this stuff? What is the criteria? I can't figure it out. Um, I wish this wasn't going on. It results in a lot of bickering and a lot of time wasted, and, and we have a perfectly good city attorney. Um, so again, I object to the, um, the retention of, um, Montana and Welch, not that they aren't a competent and capable law firm. I'm not maintaining that. I just don't think it's necessary. And, um, um, and, and again, I wish that their, uh, activity would also be ceased. We could use the money for other things. Um, so, that's, uh, that's a couple of comments I have on the payables.
This is Alderman Rita, and I would like to comment as well that, um, that is your opinion, Alderman. Um, I, I respectfully will listen to it, but again, that is only your opinion. And we feel that the investigation was needed, and because we wanted answers. And also, um, Olderson and Stirk, um, is often, uh, for the mayor, and that's why we needed Montana and Welch to come in and, um, represent us, the Alderman. Um, I also had a question. I didn't, unfortunately, I didn't get the agenda. I don't know what happened. Um, how much is the Olson and Stirk bill?
Alderman, are you there?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, why, I move for, for approval still on this, by the way.
All right, all right, uh, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, mayor, I still got questions about it.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, uh, one, Montana and Welch payment. You know, we had Olson and Stirk to have breakdowns on how we pay them for everything. We did not, I didn't, I didn't receive that. Next, I don't know.
And Alderman, you did receive that, because you sent it to all the Aldermen, and it's, it's whoever puts some bills-
Yeah, but it was not broken down. When I'm finished talking-
It wa- it was broken down.
Alderman, Alderman.
Alderman, you sit on the finance committee. You didn't show up to the meeting yesterday.
I'm not finished talking, so when I finish talking, then you can address that. So next is Acosta. Why are we paying Montana and Welch, but talking to Acosta when he just talked to us last month? Directly like he's supposed to. So I, I disagree with paying, double paying Montana and Welch for something Acosta can do to, to, as he agreed to, directly to us. So that's a waste of taxpayers' money and double tapping their system. And none of these charges are broken down that I got. And I'm sorry, he shouldn't receive payment. Acosta shouldn't receive a dime for things that he al- we already know. He has not brought nothing true to the table that we didn't already know. Yes, should we have some answers about the, about the, uh, Tahoe? Yes, we should. But because of the federal investigation, his hands are tied. So why are we gonna get this man fifteen thousand of taxpayers' money, and he can't find out anything more than what we already know and already has been presented to us? And, and I don't think he should get paid as well as Montana.
Mayor, may I have a comment, please?
Go ahead.
They, they both deserve to get paid. Alderman, you're on the finance committee. You didn't come to the meeting when we talked about this last night. You vote against the hardworking employees of the city every meeting. You vote against our vendors every meeting. So just vote no. That's what you're gonna do, and you're gonna make this long-winded speeches, and you're gonna talk about how they didn't preserve it. Vote no, that's what you do every time. You vote against our police, you vote against our firefighters, you voted against the Public Works guys who busted their tails all last night to clear up the trees. And why? You don't believe they get geared to get paid? You don't believe our garbage guy who picks up the garbage service to get paid? So just, just, just save us the time, and you're just gonna vote no, and that's, that's it. Thank you, mayor.
Mayor, I'm not finished with him.
This is Jim Clinker. Can I say something?
He shouldn't even be our finance director, first of all. He shouldn't even be our finance director. Because the money that's being spent on these guys, we-
Alderman, Clinker, go ahead.
For things that, for things that already, that we already know. Second of all, yeah, uh, Olson and Stirk was good enough for to go against the island bar and affordable housing. You didn't have no problem with that. When they went against affordable housing and I-
Public safety, public safety.
They didn't even wanna pay Olson and Stirk for it.
They were threats to the public safety.
Alderman, Alderman, we're getting off track. We're getting off track. Alderman, Clinker, go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, Alderman Johnson, just so you know, we all did get the detailed invoices from, uh, from Montana and Welch. The email is dated July seventeenth. You're on the list. I'm not saying you did got it. I don't know what, something happened or whatever, but just so everyone's aware, everyone got a copy of the detailed invoices, and the, the, I'm gonna just read the beginning of what they said. It has come to our attention that there are questions regarding our bill detail. Please be aware that Montana and Welch has always provided detailed billing to the city, and is more than happy to provide such detail individually to the council members, if that is their preference. We, we're under the impression the administration's shared these matters with you. So I think what happened is kind of the same thing that happened way back when, when we started asking Olson and Stirk to provide us with detailed bills, is that they, they were going to the city, to the finance department, and they weren't forwarding them off to us. So I completely agree with you that they need to be open and honest and give us a detailed bill, because that's what we've asked, and I was the one that kinda was the driver on the one as far as Olson and Stirk goes. Um, but they have provided us the January, March, April, and May bills, and that, like I said, that's an email dated July seventeenth to the entire city council. So hopefully you can look back in your emails and find them, but we did get them. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Uh, roll call.
Have you heard?
Go ahead.
Oh, yes, yeah. I'm, I'm objecting to pay in, uh, what is out to, uh, Ackerman, Mr. Acosta, and Montana and Welch. It's, it's a waste of taxpayers' money. I don't know these persons, never met them, have nothing against them. It's just that the taxpayers asked me to vote against it, but I will thank you.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Cazidis.
Aye.
Cazidis, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly. Holly.
There are six, Alderman.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwell.
Aye.
Fernwell, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson.
Absolutely not.
Johnson, no. Thirteen ayes and one no.
I had, you had told me that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You had told me you were gonna talk.
Thank you, uh, next, uh, thank you. Uh, next is ordinance number, uh, two thou- two zero two zero dash zero two seven. Uh, it's an ordinance, City of Blue Island, for County Illinois, approving an intermo- intergovernmental agreement between the Department of Healthcare and Family Services and City of Blue Island, Blue Island Fire Department, um, connection with enhanced rates for ambulance services. Let's make a motion to approve.
I'll second it, Rita. Rita, second it.
All right. Thank you. If any que- if no questions, roll call, please.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Did the city attorney, Mr. Horvath, uh, re- review this?
Yeah, uh, Alderman, uh, Stevo, yes, I did, and what this intergovernmental agreement will allow is for the city to recover, uh, sums of money in addition to the basic rate that the Department of Healthcare and Family Services pays with respect to ambulance services provided to, uh, individuals who receive their, uh, healthcare through Medicaid. And so it, it allows for an enhanced payment, uh, through a formula which calculates first what our cost is, what they pay, and then they create what's called an interim rate, which is then added to our cost, and we share that with the Department of, uh, Healthcare and Family Services.
That sounds very good. Thank you, Mr. Horvath.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, ro- I have no questions. Other questions, roll call.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Cazidis.
Aye.
Cazidis, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Sorry, Holly, aye, Fernwell.
Aye.
Fernwell, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye, Carr. Carr.
There are six, Alderman.
Uh, she's, she's not muted, but therefore she's unmuted. Okay, you're just muted now, Candace. I'll come back. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, fourteen ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, uh, item number four, resolution number two zero two zero dash zero three wrong, three one, to resolution approving and authorizing an agreement for services with Griz, with Griz Pest Management, Inc. This is, uh, for rat abatement, uh, throughout the city. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I second it, Rita. Rita, second. This passed out of munis- I, I'd just like to make a comment. This passed out of municipal services back in March. I don't know why it was held up. Um, I am very upset about this. The residents in the third ward have been contacting both me and Alderman Donahue. Um, we are infested with rats, and we need to get this program started, and I am appalled that it is the, uh, that it's August, and we're just getting to this now, mayor.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Cazidis.
Aye.
Cazidis, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwell.
Aye.
Fernwell, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson. Dex.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, fourteen ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, item five, resolution number two zero two zero dash zero three two, it's a resolution approving and authorizing a contract with Green Plum for ecological care of the four city rain gardens, native, native plant installation. These are the rain gardens along, uh, Longwood Drive, uh, in the fifth ward. We are required through the agreement with MWRD to maintain it. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Got a motion? You have a second?
I'll second.
Carr?
All right, Alderman Hill. If no questions, roll call, please.
I, this is Alderman Carr.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a statement. Um-
Go ahead.
I don't know what happened to this either. Um, this, it was approved by Municipal Services, and it was somehow held up. If we could get a contract signed with them right away, I don't think we have a contract yet. This is just the approval for the money to be spent. Um, the rain gardens are out of control. It's already lost, and nothing has been done out there.
We have already addressed that this weekend, Alderman. Roll call, please.
Okay. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Cazidis.
Aye.
Cazidis.
Aye.
Cazidis, aye, Rita.
Aye. And one other comment, I apologize. Mayor, could we get that, uh, the rat abatement program, uh, the pest management, uh, rolling in the third ward as soon as possible, please?
Sure, sure. We can be the test one. We can be the first one. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you. My vote is aye for the gardens.
I got you. Rita, aye, Donahue. Donahue.
I'm, I'm an aye. I, I'm, I'm an aye. I didn't hear my name, but I'll-
I'm sorry, yeah. Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwell.
Aye.
Fernwell, aye, Hill.
Absolutely, yes.
Hill, aye, Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson.
Uh, yeah.
Johnson, aye, fourteen ayes.
Thank you.
All right, item number six, resolution number two zero two zero dash zero three three, it's resolution approving and authorizing a contract with H.W. Lockner, Inc. for inspection of the Chadum Street Bridge. This is retired through the, through what we did with IDOT a couple of years ago when we rebuilt this bridge. Uh, it'll be paid out of TIF five. I'd like to make a motion to approve. Uh, it'll be paid out of TIF five. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
You got a motion? Do we need a second?
Rita, second.
Uh, if no questions, roll call, please.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Alderman Donahue, Allof Engineering is the company that built that bridge?
Yes.
I, what they, I'm sorry, they didn't build the bridge. They were the, they were the engineers for the bridge. I believe like Kenny Construction or Kerry Construction did the actual construction of the bridge. They did the engineering work.
I'm gonna vote no on both of these. I feel that we should have an independent company come in, independent of the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, roll call, please.
Hey, I got a question, um, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, is it, is it any way possible, uh, since this is like part of the Cal- Cal SAG Trail that they can offer any dollars to help out on this inspection?
Who help out? All the Cal SAG, uh, people?
Yes, sir.
We, we, we can find out. I can find out, but we gotta get this passed and then we can ask to see if they can, if there's anything where they can contribute or if they can legally.
Right. I, I, I know. I know we gotta get it passed. I was just wondering if they could.
All right. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll inquire. We'll find out.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, just to shed a little light, unless my information is mistaken, but I was an Alderman in the middle of the construction when it started. But Chatham Street Bridge and Division Street Bridge are both still owned by the City of Blue Island, correct?
That is correct.
And the Cal SAG Trail is funded by the municipalities that they cross and the municipalities have to maintain the trails there, there, within their jurisdiction, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Just wanna make that clear in case, as far as I know, Cal SAG Trail, there's no, they're not a taxing body. That's a non- non-for-profit, so.
Right. And then you also have a group of friends of the Cal SAG Trail, which is separate from this, but they do provide some funding too.
Yes, but, uh, unless we plan to give away the bridge to somebody else, it's still owned by us.
It's our bridge. That is correct. It's our bridge.
Thank you.
Alderman Farrenwell, I'd like to make a quick comment.
Yes.
Uh, I, uh, do agree with, um, Alderman Stevo's concern. I, I'm gonna vote for this. I know it needs to pass, but I think, uh, in a future, uh, inspection, we probably should at least consider his, uh, good idea.
Got it. Okay. So, roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Fourteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, number seven, resolution number two zero two zero dash zero three four. It's a resolution approver- approving and authorizing a contract with H W Lockner for inspection of the Division Street Bridge. Again, this is coming out of TIF five funds. I approve. I make, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Oh, Rita, you would take a second?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. Uh, any questions on this one? Or the same as the first? If, if not, roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Fourteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right, finally, uh, item number eight, resolution number two zero two zeros at dash zero three five. It's a resolution approving and authorizing a contract with Metropolitan Pump Company for installation of new equipment at the Vincent's Road Pump Station. Uh, the city did receive two quotes on this, uh, but this was, uh, the lowest of the two bids. Uh, the part that's being replaced is over sixty years old. It was causing some flooding and then icing in the winter at the Vincent's Pump Station. So this is a critical piece of infrastructure that needs to be replaced. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
You got a motion? Do we have a second?
Bellato, seconds.
Thank you. If no questions, roll call.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly. Holly.
Emma, aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Fourteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Uh, that's all I have. Next finance committee meeting is Monday, August the seventeenth at six P M. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Uh, Public Health and Safety Committee.
I have a question for Alderman Donahue.
What do you got, Mr. Stevo?
Uh, I'd like to know his position on committing Alderman, other than on his committee to speak at the finance meetings. Uh, what is, what is your position on that, Alderman Donahue?
Alderman, it's not a committee of the whole. It's the finance committee. I, I welcome, if you want to offer comment before, during public comment, but I will not let the committee be sidetracked by members who are not members of the committee during the meeting. Again, it's not a committee of the whole meeting. It's a finance committee meeting with set members on it. So I, I offer your, your comments before the meeting, during public comment, um, but that's it.
The committees are designed to answer questions, iron out problems that Alderman or the Alderman's might have, so we don't have to bring it to the council meeting. That's the, and I don't think you have the right or the, or the authority to stop any Alderman from attending your meeting and speaking at your meeting. I don't think you have any right. I'd like to ask, uh, Attorney Horvath opinion on resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty. I didn't mean to pull, pull this on you. I just wanna ask if you recall that resolution, if you can share some light for us, uh, Mr. Horvath.
Alderman Stevo, I, I don't have that resolution, uh, handy at this moment. Could I review it and, and give you, uh, an opinion at the next meeting? Would that be acceptable?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Yes, I apologize. I just don't have it here in front of me this evening. And I will, I'll review it and I'll answer your question at the next meeting, if that's okay.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, uh, Clinker, go ahead.
Yeah, no, no report for Public Health and Safety. Our next meeting's next Tuesday, the, what is that, the eighteenth at six P M.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, Municipal Services Committee?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Um, I've got no, but I do have four ordinances.
Okay.
I'd like to put the first two together, ordinance numbered twenty twenty oh twenty four and twenty twenty oh twenty five. This is ordinances restricting a horse certain street for handicap parking only.
I made a motion. Uh, so we need a motion. You got a motion? And do we have a second?
Alderman Hill.
All right, thank you. If no questions, roll call, please.
Um, Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue. Donahue. He seems to have disappeared. I'll come back. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Donahue. He's not here.
I, um, he texted me. He says his phone died. He was at three percent a few seconds ago, so he might be off now.
All right, thirteen ayes.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Alderman.
Then I've got ordinance numbered twenty twenty dash oh twenty eight and ordinance rescinding handicap parking restrictions to certain street in the city of Blue Island. Like to make a motion?
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Bellato, seconds.
Second, Farrenwell.
Thank you very much. If no questions, roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Oh.
Zelman. She appears to be gone as well. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Zelman. She's gone as well. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead, Alderman.
Your Honor, they're dropping like flies. This is Alderman Farrenwell. Candy's phone just died, so I'm gonna read the next ordinance.
How many do we have? How many do we have, um?
We have twelve here. We have twelve.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Alderman.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty zero twenty nine and ordinance of the city of Blue Island approving an intergo- governmental agreement between the city and the Metropolitan Order Reclamation District of Chicago for design, construction, operation and maintenance of the Blue Island one hundred nineteenth place bioswale and permeable alley. I will move forward's adoption.
Do we have a second? Thank you very much.
I'll second it, Rita.
All right, uh, second, Alderman Rita. Any, if no questions, roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Uh, Bill, is, is Candace with you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman. Zelman was also going, right, okay. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Nothing further, right, Alderman?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
All right, thank you very much. Judiciary Committee?
Um. Uh, our next meeting is next Tuesday, which is August eighteenth, correct? August eighteenth at six P M.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm caught up with all my minutes, so.
Uh, timeout. That should be seven P M. Nancy, we're at six P M. Public Health and Safety.
Wait, what?
Public Health and Safety.
Oh, that's right. We're at seven P M. I, I apologize. Uh, seven P M. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Alderman Clinker, for that clarification. So next Tuesday, seven P M. All right, um, any Aldermanic announcements or comments?
Uh, this is Alder- Oh.
This is Alderman Hill. I would just like to, uh, commend the Public Works. I was out riding around in the fifth ward yesterday and I took pictures of all of the falling trees and they were doing a terrific job. I just wanna say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Alderman Rita, I'd like to make a comment, of course, again, about the rats. They are, um, we just had so many complaints and, um, not only with my neighbors and I've gotten emails, but I personally seeing them in my yard, in my alley. Um, if we could please get that abatement program going A S A P, I truly would appreciate it. I've lived here my whole life and I've never seen a rat before and it's just, makes me very sad. Um, and then, uh, the other thing I wanted to thank Public Works, they did a great job. They were out. Um, I didn't, Mayor, I didn't know that you were taking information from the Alderman and I do have, um, a couple of wires down. I was out last night and I took pictures.
In fact, in fact, I went down in your area. I took the ones from Hoin and I think I might have covered the ones that you had. But, uh, if not, I will double check it. But I did take care of, uh, around the Saint Donatus area, the wires that were down by on Hoin and Lincoln. And then there was another one also. Yeah, I got the.
Uh, Seeley in York. Yeah.
Yes, we got that one.
So, okay, thank you. And we're, I'm still without, or we're still without power. So I don't know. I had heard, I don't know if it's a rumor, that ComEd will not be out here till Saturday. If you do hear anything different, if you or Marisol could please contact me, I truly would appreciate it.
I think ComEd is telling all municipalities that everything should be up by Saturday in general, but we've been talking to their supervisors, uh, almost on an hourly basis. And we're putting the pressure on them. They're trying to do the best. They've already been in Blue Island. They're continuing working in our city. So they're gonna try to get us up way before that fif- uh, Saturday, the, uh, the fifteenth of August.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, this is Alderman Alexander. Yes, this is Alderman Alexander. I just wanna thank everyone for their support, um, for the event on, the shredded event on Saturday. It was amazing. We had over a hundred, um, cars come by. We gave out, um, masks and, um, ComEd kits. Um, it was really great. So I just wanna thank everyone who supported it. Um, even though, you know, we had some negativity, some of our, our workers were told to get off their block, but it's okay. I'm also having a mask, community mask giveaway on Thursday from four to six here at the John D. Rita Rec Center, the parking lot. So everyone is welcome. Come out, get masks, making sure that everyone stays safe. If you can come out, great. Um, if you have any questions about it, please give me a call. Again, I thank everybody for their support.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one comment, Alderman Farrenwell.
Go ahead.
Uh, just like to remind again that we have the food giveaway, uh, Saturday at Eisenhower at ten thirty. And I would like to really recognize Alderman Johnson. Uh, he always brings a truckload of wonderful food and he really makes that event happen.
Yes, he does.
So thank you, Alderman Johnson.
Yes. We wanna thank all of them and all the volunteers, all the sponsors of that event. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor, Alderman Bellato.
Go ahead.
I wanna thank the community, uh, for Saint, from Saint Donatus. Uh, we had our Pizza Rama last weekend over three nights.
Oh, yeah.
We took in over fifty thousand dollars in three nights, um, which was great. It's, it's not as much as the carnival takes in, but it's, uh, between the raffle and the pizza, it was over fifty thousand dollars. It was a great turnout. it's, uh, we're giving the raffle on the pizzas over fifty thousand dollars. It was a great turnout. Um, more than we actually sell during the actual carnival, 'cause all we have is the pizza. So we're just non-stop cooking from ten o'clock to ten o'clock at night. And I probably lost twenty pounds in front of the five hundred degree oven and got a tan from sitting in front of the oven, but it's all for the church and the community. So I wanna thank the community for that and we'll come back stronger, God willing, next year.
Got it. Two hundred of those sales were for my family members. Just kidding.